Call to order, Town of North Branford, Town Council meeting.
Tuesday, February 15, 2022, in Town Council chambers at 7:12 PM. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay. All right. Michelle, if you'd call, roll call for us, please?
Mayor McMillan.
Present, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zianpano.
Here.
Councillor Abelson.
Here.
Councillor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Downs. Councillor Code.
Here.
Councillor Mace.
Here.
And Councillor Pollicia.
Here.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will entertain our motion for acceptance of the meeting, the previous minutes of the previous meeting, A, January 25, 2022 workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Angeloni, second by Councillor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, let's all pass. And I'll accept a motion for the minutes, February 1, 2022, WPCA and Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Angeloni, second by Councillor Diamond. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on the previous minutes from January 25, Councillor Abelson also was not at that meeting, so he would have to abstain from this.
Understood. So we'll, there you go. I should have called abstain, should I? I apologize. Thank you very much. Okay, so note that Councillor Abelson has abstained from the 20th. Okay. Move on to the regular Town Council meeting. Agenda item four, Town Manager Report. Mr. Paulus, Michelle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have the report in your packet on the update. I'll hit the highlight there where North Branford monthly cases for January peaked at 809 and thus far in February, 73 cases, so quite a significant drop in the number of cases. Our positivity is lagging behind in terms of, if you look at the state, I think we're at, I believe it's 14, I'm sorry, 17.6, but that was in the first part of February, and it's just lagging behind. I know I've got a report from the governor today that the statewide daily positivity is 6.1%. So I would expect that as our numbers lag, that we get up, that our numbers in terms of positivity are coming down as well. The sobering statistic unfortunately is the fact that we've had 25 deaths throughout the, since the start of the pandemic, and that's the stark reality, which is unfortunate. But in the spike in January, we had, you know, I reported, we had two additional fatalities. But as you can see, the numbers are declining rapidly. We're just going to continue to monitor that, look for guidance from the state, and continue to put out as much information as we can with respect to vaccination clinics, boosters and, you know, test kits, I think, are available. We're not getting any more from the state, but they seem to be available within the stores for private purchase, so that's what I have. We'll continue to monitor and keep, hope, you know, that the trend keeps working in our favor.
Mike, are all boards and commission meetings now in person?
I, at this point, yeah. I think that we have a few, but I'll be certainly sending out more communication as of Thursday or Friday. I think I did that already. I think we had sent out to bring them back, so I don't know that there's any, anyone not complying with that at this point, so we're moving back to that and, you know, relinquishing or repealing the mandate and going with, you know, mask as recommended and distancing when possible, so.
And just on a side note, as far as masking, the North Branford Public Schools, the superintendent did come out with a letter today to parents that the mask mandate, as of March 1, students will not be required to wear masks in school. If they feel they want to, or the parents feel that they want to, they still can, but they will be required to wear them on the bus still. Public transportation and buses, bus drivers have to wear them, and the kids do have to wear them on the bus also, but as of March 1, which is in conjunction with the governor's which passed at the state level, that the mask mandate would be up to the local school districts as of March 1. And so his letter came out today and said that they will not be required, but they still can if they want to.
Okay. That's all I have on item A, and again, we'll, we're continuing to meet weekly, and I'll report back next meeting. The next item is item B, draft memo and pledge of allegiance to boards and commissions. Councillor Pollicia had reached out and requested I take a look at possibly, you know, confirming or sending out a request, which I think has merit, I think, as we look at this whole process that we've gone through. Virtual meetings are tough, the hybrid meetings are tough, and, you know, even though as much as we try to get, you know, a certain flow of business and decorum, it's a tough, it's a tough nut to crack, and, you know, it's a little bit difficult. And I think, as my memo indicates, I think, you know, I should put together a memo if the council agrees that, you know, requesting that all boards and commission incorporate that. And I do want to apologize, I think there was an oversight with respect to the list that I provided. I'm informed that the Fire Commission does do a pledge at all of their meetings, so that was an oversight on my part. But I will encourage the rest to do so, and I think it will set the tone, I think, for meetings. And I think it's an important aspect, so.
Thank you for doing that, Mike. Appreciate it.
No, I think it was a great idea. So without objection, I'll move forward and I'll craft a memo to all boards and commission.
Please do. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Anthony just said that the park act is not to, we're not on the list of not doing pledge of allegiance. I can reassure you, hybrid, virtual, or inverted, 100% of the time, we did pledge of allegiance.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe one of the issues was in terms of a quick review, like the council clearly has salute to the flag, and it may be a practice of a lot more boards and commissions that maybe just doesn't say it on the, on the agenda, but it is a practice, which is good to know.
We'd like to see that added to the agendas of each commission.
Yeah.
Great, I appreciate that, Mike. You do great. It's a simple ask.
Yes, so next item, moving on to item C, the council had asked to add this under my report, the Permanent Project Building Committee items for both the high school and police department. So I've added that and can report out that the Permanent Project Building Committee did not meet last night and not going to meet the 21st because of the holiday, they're going to meet on the 22nd. So they are moving forward. Steel is, as obviously, the crane is there and steel is going up. I think one of the issues to mention there, as you may have already been aware of this or heard of this, that there was an incident with a column falling on site. Gilbain has investigated, continues to go through reports with respect to their reporting, their policies, procedures, in terms of safety and all of that. That's going to get a thorough, continues to get a thorough review. They've gone back to look at the actual structural integrity of the beam itself, and that has been removed, and that happened already, so that is out of the equation. They replaced it with a new beam, and the impact of the base or floor, if you will, will be addressed at a later date when temperatures rise. So, you know, there was, it was an issue, and certainly one that raised concern, and so I think Gilbain is appropriately taking action to review, to make sure, to the best of their abilities, that this does not happen again, so. And I think they went through the process to make sure that they took that beam out, so there'd be no question as to any of the, you know, safety or integrity of the structure, so to speak, so.
I got to ask that, to make sure it was reiterated that, you know, the structure integrity of that, of that build-out at this current point in time is as needed and as fit.
Yep.
They've done all the right measures. That's great.
Yes, sir, and the reports will be, both the report and the analysis and the testing results will be sent to the Permanent Project Building Committee for their review.
Correct.
So they're moving forward, and Police Department as well, getting to the final stages of the value engineering and putting that bid package together, so that should be out for March 1st is the goal, first part of March, to get that out on the street. So that is also moving forward, and, you know, I think we have another issue with respect to the layout or the site plan, and obviously we can defer comment later on in the agenda for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Mike, back to the high school, they did change the beam?
Yes.
Changed it? It's unchanged?
Yes. Yep, I had confirmation from Kevin, who's the super on the site there, that that happened already.
And that beam, the cost of that replacement beam was honestly, that was on?
Fully borne by Gilbain.
Gilbain or Gilbain's contingency?
Great question. I will check on that.
Yeah, that's important, because obviously that contingency's.
Well, I was at the Permanent Project Building Committee when they discussed this, because it was the week after they had it.
Correct.
And they showed the video, and Amar from Gilbain said that there would be absolutely no cost to the town for this at all. So nothing was coming out of the project, everything was being taken care of, and there was no cost to the town, is what he reported.
That's good. We'll just double-check to make sure it's not coming out of builder's contingency, but I believe that you were correct in saying that, but just to be certain.
How do they protect the concrete or hit the concrete? What do they do for that?
They'll cut out that portion of concrete, and they'll put the specified rebarb in it, and then they'll repour. It'll actually be stronger at that point with what they do with it. So they have, this stuff happens, unfortunately, this or other things drop on concrete, particularly when it's, we're doing it in cold weather, and there could be pockets of air, and it makes it not, you know, not cure properly. So they have ways to go in when the temperature is more agreeable, cut out that portion of it, and then put in the proper rebarb into it and pour that new concrete in. So it actually works out very well. It's a common practice.
The beam, did it hit any other beams when it came down?
Yes.
I thought that was a part of the report.
Yeah, that was part of the report, and they did the testing on that as well, to make sure that that, the, and the way I remember it, and I'll go through it again, and make sure that that issue was dealt with as well, that it was in the, I guess, tolerable range of structural integrity, so.
Yeah, what they generally do will put, they'll x-ray it to make sure there's no areas of weakness within that structure, but can we double-check and have that reported in the next committee meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Just, and your next committee report, I should say, just to have, you know, a synopsis of how it was addressed. You know, we're very lucky that it wasn't a bigger issue, a life safety issue, a beam of that size and weight, and the pressure of it coming down could really have a very devastating impact if there was somebody there. So we're lucky that wasn't the case. Structure's going to be fixed, people can. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anything else in regards to the reports?
That's all I have.
Okay, and I'm going to say thank you to the Permanent Project Building Committee. They've done fantastic work in vetting out and making sure things like this are addressed, so we really appreciate. These are, again, people that are volunteering their time, and they're there, more hours than, the pay's not great, put it that way, there are a lot of hours, as are folks that are, you know, in these meetings, like Michael, like Ms. Pollak, and doing the minutes, so I appreciate the efforts that they're putting in there to make sure this school, this large structure, very costly structure, putting in North Branford, is done correctly. So thank you for that. All right, so we're going to move on to agenda item five, community events and presentations. Subset A, John Acavalo, FYE 0630, 2021, audit.
Mr. Mayor, John Acavalo is here tonight to present the audit. Finance Committee had some preliminary pieces of information, my MDNA section, they had the management letter, my responses, balance sheet, and income statement. John does have the audit at your desk tonight, and the same pages that I referenced in my memo, John will touch on tonight. Laura here.
Apologies for the name. On the presentation, we try to keep it brief and right to the point and touch on areas that we believe would be of importance, and Anthony did a good job putting together a brief synopsis of the financial events, just to touch on those areas. So with that said, the audit report, the opinion on the financial statements was a clean opinion, the best opinion that an auditor can give. That is on page six of the audited financial statements under opinions. So for the year ended, the financial position for the town of North Branford, Connecticut, as of 6/30/21, and the respective changes in budgetary comparison of the general fund for the year then ended, is fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. With that said, you know, what does that mean? It means that the numbers were tested, and that your fund balance is audited. And when you look at the financial statements, everybody really cares about page 27. That's the budget to actual. That goes through each individual line of where you thought things were going to be, the changes that were made on the budget, and the actual results during the year, and what's left over or what was spent over. The town, the town of North Branford did not have a department that went over budget. The individual, there was one individual line that did, and it was minimal, but each department came in and within their budgeted line items. With that said, all property taxes, it was a good year for property taxes, investment earnings, it wasn't, wasn't so much, and then everything else is pretty much in line. Biggest, the biggest issue, and always is the biggest issue, is where did the Board of Ed come out? And they were under budget by $500,000 for the year.
Well, that, I just, that is, I've never seen a number this high for them, and in reading your report, there were items where there were a lot of unqualified purchase orders? Can you just explain that a little bit?
Unqualified?
Well, not unqualified, or they were purchase orders that were cut that?
Oh, what they did, what they did was, they, at the end of the year, they say that they're going to spend this, and then after year-end, what we like to do, and what they did, was they said, "We're not spending that, we're not spending this," and they liquidated. So they didn't use their full budget amount, and there's a lot of boards of ed that say that, "We're going to, it's our money, we're spending it," and, and that wasn't the case. So they were fiscally responsible with the money. They liquidated encumbrances within a reasonable period of time after year-end, and it turned out to be a much better year than they originally anticipated.
So were the purchase orders cut close to the end of the year?
They're always, they're always cut close to the, wherever you go. I mean, that we don't like to see, and we're always looking at those items that are, anything that's cut on a 6/30, I mean, it's, that's a scramble, you know, to spend the money. And there's higher risk that there's not an actual expenditure that goes along with that, so we look at that in particular, depending on materiality.
Okay. Because I've never seen this, I mean, in well over 20 years, I've never seen a number like this.
Is it, you think, because of COVID? Because of?
Some of, some of it has to do with COVID, you know. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't your ordinary year either, you know, so I don't know if you're going to see the same thing, like you said, 20 years of not seeing anything like that, and it was not an ordinary year anyway, but, you know, laying the foundation to say, if you're, if you should have your POs and cash flowed out in May, or March even, and say, "This is what we got to spend," and go on and have a plan, and spend it within the correct fiscal year, because that's what the taxpayers were taxed on, not buying things for next fiscal year, and just because you're trying to spend. But with that said, that was, that was the biggest, you know, under expenditure of any department for the year, and all of those under expenditures and over, revenues over to the good, turned out to be a net change of $900,000 to the unrestricted, unassigned, unrestricted fund balance, taking it from 9.5 million to 10.4, which is, I believe, approximately 16, almost 17% of the budgeted expenditures for that year, which is a strong financial position for the town.
I'd just like to say that Jeff and I were both on the Board of Ed last year, and I know both of us were really fiscally responsible whenever the superintendent had to make proposals to spend money and everything. You agree, Jeff?
Mm-hmm.
So.
The tone, the tone from the top.
Not only to the superintendent, but to the members of the Board of Ed, with Jeff and I and the other members, we always made sure that, you know, we took great care in assessing monies that had to be expended.
It's all about the tone from the top, the boards pushing that point of view down and following it. It makes a big difference. With that said, that's your number one, number one point to be made, is that it was, it was a good financial year for the town, and there's more money that's in unassigned, which I believe the board designated approximately 800,000. You're spending down your fund balance and using that to subsidize, and that's, and that's the right thing to do. You have your budgeted fund balance number where you want it to be, it's in line with what Gatsby says is good, and bonding looks on it favorably as well. So with that, with that said, that's, that's page 27. The individual departments, and the breakdown of the departments are reported on page 86 and 87, so the individual lines that roll up into those numbers, the detail of each individual department and revenue lines are on those pages, if you wanted to look at them, and you can see that on page 87, the only, the only overage is in one line, and everything else is under.
Okay.
With that said, during the audit process, usually we have a lot of audit adjustments and differences of opinion. There were not more than, I believe, five adjustments, of which four adjustments came from the finance office, and that's really, really unique to have that. Usually, the information that the board is getting materially changes at 6/30, so if you looked at a 6/30 report, budget to actual versus the audit report, you shouldn't see big differences in what we're presenting as audited numbers versus what you're getting to make management decisions on a month-to-month basis. So you want to make sure that your numbers are good. The adjustments that we, we had versus what came out of finance was one adjustment on top of everything else, and most of them were reclass entries. So the numbers that are going to the board on a month-to-month basis are good numbers. That's, that's basically the audit in a nutshell. As we're going through in the audit process, certain items do come to our attention, that we see areas that the town might be able to improve on, of which are in the management comment book that you have. There are four items on there, and I believe that the town is, or has been acting on the majority of those items before we even made it to this, before those findings made it to this report. So 2021-1 was automated compensated absences. The town is doing that, working with the payroll modules to get those up to date, and so the automated compensated absences are something that's going to allow for less errors and a more accurate reporting moving forward. The next one, 21-02, fraud risk assessment. Ever so often, we'd like to see that there's a review by the finance office in areas of weakness and to make adjustments to controls that are more risky than other areas. Computers change, the COVID environment impacted a lot of different things. There's new systems, log-ons, and a lot of different things. We just would like to see that, or review be done on a regular basis. It doesn't have to be every year, it could be every couple of years, but the question really is, and has to be asked, is what could go wrong? And if you assess that and you plan for that, then you put the steps in place, and you end up finding or eliminating problems before they become problems. The next item is 2021-03, establishment of an audit committee. A lot of times, the Town Council operates as the audit committee. I think it might be beneficial to have a subsection of the Town Council operate and work with the auditors, so we're discussing scope and your breast of everything that's going on on a regular basis. With that said, these items that come up or issues are not surprises at that point in time, and then you can get an earlier jump on it. So with that said, I believe it's a best practice. It doesn't have to be anything special, it doesn't have to be just board members, it could be outside members as well, if you choose. You can bring in outside people, an outside CPA or somebody else if you wanted to. It's your, your audit committee. Again, with that said, you know, your contact with the auditors is on a regular basis, and you keep abreast of everything that's going on.
We actually did discuss this at our finance subcommittee meeting, and we just decided that since the finance, we have four members from the council on the finance subcommittee, and we would just be the audit committee instead of establishing another one, and then we just, we'll just bring everything back to the council.
That's perfect. That works.
So that, that will be the audit committee.
Excellent. Like I said, the town has been acting on the majority of these things before they even hit the report, you know, and it's, the timing of it, and we're reporting history, you know, in a perfect world, we'd be, you know, up and done within, you know, a month and a half, but there is so much. But there is so much information that goes into this report, well over 100 pages. But with that, with that said, the last is 2021-04, centralized grant accounting and monitoring. And this is a collaboration really between the Board of Ed and town. The information for the grants have to be put in a centralized area so finance can see what the total amounts of the expenditures are to make a determination on what the scope of the audit should be. If federal grant monies, historically, the town has not had to have a federal single audit. But with ARPA money and all this other COVID money and everything else being spent, it puts the town into a different fiscal category where there has to be more requirements under audit, more compliance testing. Everybody knows that the federal government does not give money without having strings attached to it. And those strings require certain compliance items to be taken care of. If, if that information is not shared, the scope of the audit could move on without having us being able to catch it in time where we could have been doing work in July and August instead of later on and pushing, pushing it off. So the federal and state single audit schedules that show the amounts that are spent are the requirement and responsibility of the town. But there has to be a collaboration between the town and Board of Ed because a significant portion of the federal grant money that's being spent is by the Board of Education. And if they don't share the information, finance would never know what is being spent on either the federal and state.
We also discussed this at finance committee last week also, and we're going to start quarterly reports starting like in March, not the new fiscal year, at our second meeting of the month because that's usually our finance meeting on that, and asking both from the town side and the Board of Ed side to get a breakdown of those accounts, the grant accounts from both sides, so that we can see that.
Yeah, we thought it was important to bridge that gap.
I think so. It, it always comes down to the communication between the town and Board of Ed. Good communication, good working relationships turn out to be fiscally rewarding for the taxpayers, and that's really what it's all about. With that said, I don't know if there's any questions that we're asked.
Now that I was, thank you, Rose, for volunteering me to be on the audit committee, I appreciate that. What is the timeliness communication between your firm and us? And who do you communicate with, and what things have to be prepared for you to have that we have to perform?
Well, you don't have to perform anything.
Okay.
It's just a monitoring responsibility. And it, it really depends on, you're, you're setting the tone.
Okay.
So it's really up to the board to decide how much or how little contact. If, if I had a saying, I would say you'd, you'd want to keep involved on a bi-weekly basis. And then when it gets closer to the due date, maybe if things go, something happens where there's an issue, maybe weekly. But there's usually not a reason to meet or, you know, have any kind of contact other than bi-weekly. Everything you're going to get with that wrapped into probably a monthly update, you know, from finance, from Anthony. But other than that, bi-weekly, I would, I would say is a good way to start. And then if it's going very smooth, maybe, maybe you'd scale it to three weeks. But I think two weeks is a good place to start.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions before we move on?
Okay. I want to thank the, the finance office for all the help that they gave us in getting the information to us in the format that we needed it. It was, it was very helpful.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, citizen statements and petitions correspondence. Any citizen statements in the crowd today? Are we virtual as well?
No.
Didn't know if there was something there. You have a TV. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to item number seven, resignations and appointments. There's currently no resignations. However, we are going to make a few appointments. We have to update a couple of appointments that were done on our last meeting just due to some, some. Technical glitches, that's what we'll use, yes, technical glitches. First is going to be, outside of that, it's going to be item A, appointment of Darren Peterson as tree warden.
Yes, that comes as a request from the Public Works Director, Fran Marola, who is currently the tree warden and, but has since recently hired the arborist, Mr. Peterson, who has also, as you see in the, in the packet there, gone to school to get the exam, pass the exam for tree warden. Mr. Marola feels that that would be the best designation for the department. He would still have oversight over Mr. Peterson, but feels that, that would be a great role and duty responsibility for him to have, and that requires the council to make that appointment. So a simple appointment of Mr. Peterson.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Darren Peterson as the North Branford tree warden.
Yeah, I, I have a question. I noticed on this letter, dated July 7, 2021, and it was signed on August 9. And his six-month probationary period, does this mean that his six-month probationary period is concluded now, Mike?
I, good question. I didn't even look at that, quite honestly. Certainly, I'm, I don't think that's going to be an issue, I will check that.
I don't believe it's in our charter.
Huh?
I don't believe it's an issue within our charter.
No, it's a six, six-month probationary period, just want to make sure. The vote tonight, does it start his six-month probation, or he's already worked from July 9?
He started on August 9.
August 9 to now, August, September, November, December, January, February, so.
February 9 would be his sixth month.
Yeah, February 9 would be six months.
Huh?
February 9 would be six.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify, that's all.
Yeah. And, and that math works, he would certainly have passed his six-month period. In and only all, all reports is that, that Mr. Peterson is doing a wonderful job and is a great fit for the department and for the town.
I'm going to give him a great title, it's tree warden, that sounds fun, good cape with that. Okay, I have a motion on the table, Counselor Angeloni, I believe seconded by Counselor Goat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. So passes, he is the tree warden. All right. We're going to go on to appointment B. Victoria Lanza, Democrat, to Board of Education to fill an expired term of Vincent Mace, term to expire 11/14/23.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Mace, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Shall pass, abstained, shall pass. Item C, appointment of Kim Dawson, Republican, to Board of Education to fill the unexpired term of Cynthia Rice, term to expire 11/14/23.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Mace, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a question. We've, we've submitted a number of appointments and reappointments, when are those going to be on the agenda?
Those will be on the agenda soon, hopefully. I'd like to have the appointments from both parties together. I expressed that to the head of DNC as well as head of RTC, so that we're not, you know, fragmented and doing things as a piecemeal. It was important to add these two appointments to the agenda so there wasn't any holes in the Board of Education as they go into their budget season. Absolutely. So, you know, the good news is with North Branford, our charter says that if someone is in a position, an appointment now, they maintain into that position, even if not reappointed, until they are replaced. So at this point in time, for the majority of those appointments.
No, I know, and I, I know that, and I know the, the people who have been on, they've asked that question, why haven't I been reappointed? Or why hasn't it come before then?
Sure, so we're, we're going to, once we have everyone's appointments together, as a group, we're going to make those appointments at once versus doing it in a fragmented process. That's how I've seen it, you know, to deem a fit. As long as it's not affecting the overall work of the boards, we're good. If there is something specific and there's a particular appointment that is necessary that will affect the, the overall work of the board, please do come see me, and we can adjust as you see we've done here. But I'd like to have them all done together, and I hope to do that very soon. It was my hope that would be this meeting, but unfortunately I don't have everything together yet. Hopefully, I do, I see the concern for that, I want to get it done as soon as possible.
I can understand the, the reappointments, holding off on those. But according to the handout tonight that we received from the town clerk, any vacancy, if there's a vacancy, shall be filled within 45 days.
Yeah, so. There are some vacancies that are unfilled, you're correct.
So I understand reappointments we could hold up on because they're still on the boards or commission, whatever it is. But when it comes to a vacancy, are we in violation of this statute that says any vacancy shall be filled within 45 days, and we're not filling it? I mean, that's my question.
That's a good question, we could certainly look at the charter and see if it's, if it's fit. Are you, are you aware of any specific vacancy that?
No, I just got this tonight, though. I listened to Marie.
No, I know, when I submitted, there were two appointments besides that Board of Ed appointment.
And then I'll actually ask you that question.
Is anyone complaining?
No, no, possibly.
That's three out, look, the words speak for themselves and generally say, it's saying, you're conform to your charter, but if there is no contest over it because there is some reason for the delay, and, you know, in today's world of the pandemic, delays happen regularly, that, you know, yes, you may be in technical delay, but if you, if the position is currently being filled, you know, again, unless there's a contest, I would say you just move along to your ordinary course.
Yeah, but the problem is, the potential candidate is not coming before the town council to complain. They'll go before, you know, like Marie, a town council member to say, when is the appointment coming? When is the appointment coming? When is the appointment coming?
But that's inquiry. Is that an inquiry or a complaint?
No, it's just a question. I, when I submitted the list, there were two additional, besides the one for the Board of Ed, I had two others that were appointments, not reappointments. I don't think there are any that.
You could certainly bring those to our attention, and we can, yeah, absolutely. You know, we can discuss getting those on the next agenda. If there are, I have no problem filling, if there's a need for vacancy, we'll have no problem filling them in, I understand that. But as for the reappointments, it's, it's more technicality than anything else. But if there's something specific for your party, please do bring it to my attention, okay? We're happy to do that.
Yeah, just one clarification, the difference between a reappointment and a vacancy. The vacancy is updated, the reappointment, you can continue.
Correct. Correct. And please do note that some of these vacancies, we have had, not had appointments for them because we don't have people to fill them.
So we want, we want volunteers, Jeff, so we want to.
And folks who are listening out there, if you want to volunteer, please, go to your RTC or DTC or come to the board, and, and we can certainly talk to you about filling those. We always look for, for people to help out. The pay's not great, but the experience is wonderful.
Oh, the pay's terrific.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing it to my attention. Okay, are we good? We, well, we didn't finish out that vote there. Normally what we would do is put that in discussion, but we do have a motion on the floor. Remind me, I believe it was Counselor Mace that made the motion and seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Any other discussion? Okay. Typically, let's wait to ask that before we go into discussion, just to, we don't forget these things. It's important to do that, keep some water within this. All right, so that being said, we're going to make a vote here. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. That shall pass, thank you. And congratulations yet again to Ms. Lanza and Ms. Dawson. I know you're going to do a wonderful job at the Board of Education, we appreciate your service to the board as well. And of course, to the new tree warden, Mr. Peterson, great title, tree warden. Okay, move on. We could change that to tree czar, that would be neat too. Do that. Yeah. All right, agenda item eight, unfinished business, discussion in action. Subset A, review of a proposed amendment for inter-ministerial animal control agreement. I do believe this is something that we will hopefully come off of our agenda of unfinished business soon, but as of right now, not coming off. Am I correct in saying that?
Correct, we're hoping to have a meeting this week and from there hopefully make some progress.
Okay. All right, so we will keep that on unfinished business for now and move that on to something greater in the future. All right, B, proposed ordinance of 2022-1, an ordinance to regulate pocket bikes, mini bikes, dirt bikes, and all-terrain vehicles. Where do we sit on that?
Yeah, we kept that, well, you closed the hearing, kept, I guess, the deliberation of that percolating, allowing members to digest it and consider. And tonight is your opportunity to, you know, edit more, move forward with what you have, agree upon the, the language, and then essentially approve the ordinance if you desire.
Have we had the updates and the edits that we talked about?
Well, there was one made, which we took out, they took out the, the timeframe on private property, which is under, it was C1, under three.
C, yeah.
Three C, and then subset one, so that has been taken out. The other thing we talked about that I did not see changed on here was, right here, 11, the effective date. Deputy Chief Lovelace had talked to us and said that they would need at least 30 days to contact all of the gas stations and everything as far as the way the regulation is set. So we discussed briefly as to whether we were going to make it 30 days or 45 days, just to give them a little bit of leeway.
I think we came down to 45, correct?
Yeah, I thought it was just to, to make sure that they had enough time. The way it's written right now, it's 21 days after we take the vote on it. But I know we had discussed this, and Deputy Chief Lovely had suggested at least 30 days.
So do we need a motion to amend this today, or how do we change 21 to 45?
Right, so right now in the process, you've closed your public hearing, and you're in your deliberation. So you can make changes based on what was presented during the public hearing or what arises out of your deliberations. I have made a change, the effective date, so that it's 45 days following the date of your approval. So if you have other proposed changes, let me know. And then when we have a final provides document, that's what, that, that will be the ordinance that you'll vote on, either y or n.
So then you already changed it in your computer from 20 to 45?
I did.
Okay. So we'll get that document at the next town council meeting?
Yeah.
With the change?
Yeah.
Do we have to vote on it then, or?
We will whenever.
I mean, you have to vote on the change now?
Whenever the pleasure of the body.
So the document's ready to go?
No, that's.
Are there any other changes that we want to make?
Yeah, that's essentially what we're talking about, we want to see if there's other changes on here. So we have, we've changed the private property, the most important part of this is.
That was the biggest.
The biggest kind of.
Thing that came up in the public.
Forty-five days, I think we can amend it to 45 days and have, if the body is, so, so moves, we can make a motion, accept a motion with the amendments that we spoke of today, the 45 days, and get this off of unfinished business and have it passed. I would be willing, if that's viable to do, to entertain a motion, as said, and, and take it to a vote today.
Yep.
Okay? All right, well, I, as, is there any other discussion on this before we?
There is one other little change, does it make a difference?
No, please.
Just, you know, that he changed the word from city to town, just so everybody is aware of that.
That's, thank you, that is true, that's absolutely needed to be done.
That was, yes, that clerical mistake was made.
Is there anything else in that, that matter of clerical mistakes or grammatical mistakes, anything else that we have to change?
To the town's claim. Okay, I see the change.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Ordinance, well, is there a number to it?
It might be.
2022-1.
It could be dash two now, though, right? Could it be dash two?
Well, this, right here is 2021, but it's.
Well, it was proposed in, originally in 21, I don't know, that's, might be above my pay grade. I don't know how Lisa does that.
Mike, can we make this?
To the appropriate, yeah, I think you can.
I would, I would say it's proposed, we're proposing now, it's your first ordinance of the year, so 2022-1.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance 2021-1, an ordinance, well.
Or 2020.
2022-1.
Yeah.
It's the 2122 year, so what do you go by, 22 or 21?
Well, I'll go by the calendar year. I think the calendar year is.
Okay, that's fine. So proposed ordinance 2022-1, an ordinance to regulate pocket bikes, minibikes, dirt bikes, all-terrain vehicles, and the like, with the changes noted, and also the change in section 11, to go from twenty-one days to forty-five days for the effective date.
Second.
All right. I have a motion on the floor by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Mace. Any discussion?
Yeah, where does, where does snowmobile fit into it?
It does, it's under, I just saw it, section two, it's the last item, it's on H3.
I see that, but where does that fall into the, like, I'm looking at the title, and I'm, I'm wondering, is it just the and the like?
And the like.
Okay.
Because there's other vehicles that they mentioned in here. So snowmobiles are part of this. I know there was a lot of chatter on Facebook when we got all the snow, as to whether this would pertain to snowmobiles, and snowmobiles are written into this ordinance. So it does pertain to snowmobiles also.
Okay. And again, reiterate, we've taken out the, the understanding of that this would be an ordinance on private property. We know that folks that have land that like to run their snowmobiles on their piece of land, that's certainly their, their ability to do so. Any other discussion? All right, Clerk Pollock, I'd like to take a roll call vote, please.
Okay, sorry. Mayor McMillan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zian Pena.
Yes.
Councilor Edison.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Goode.
Yes.
And Councilor Mace.
Yes.
And Councilor Polichow.
Yes.
All right, that passes, thank you. Okay. Move things off of unfinished business, doing good things here, sir. All right, we're gonna move on to section C, state reimbursement of NBHS projects tabled until May 22. Vote, so. We talked about voting to remove this.
Yeah.
Because things have changed where we may be able to actually.
We can.
Do things now, we've had some, some leeway with this, versus that, as Anthony had stated, one bite of the apple, we've had some leeway here. So will that require a motion to remove?
I make a motion to remove, sorry.
All right, motion to remove, by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Mace. Any discussion?
Are you taking over over there?
I got your seat.
All right, we keep it, all right, let's do, all right, we have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Mace, thank you, Councilor Mace. Any discussion on this particular motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? It's passed, it's, thank you. That will be taken off. Okay, moving on to nine, new business discussion in action. A, review and approval, the bit-specific RFQ slash P, number one, 2022-2023, for website design development and hosting.
Yeah, this is the culmination of the last, seems like seventeen years of demonstrations and the else we've had.
Yeah, this is gonna be on MS DOS, correct?
Yeah. So the, the key to this is page seventy-seven in your, in your tablet, where we went by a functionality grid, following a couple other towns, so we have some ideas of some things that we really want to see, and then it's gonna be, you know, do you have these? And then we'll review the responses when they come back. E-notifications, the ability to view them on, you know, handheld devices instead of just computers, can they incorporate emergency notifications, register for different events, dynamic content, a bunch of nice things that we looked at over the last few months of demonstrations, and then once these come back, we'll be able to analyze them and see if they comply with all our, our needs, and whittle it down from that point, hopefully, and come back with a recommendation. This is basically just blesses it to get on the street to see what's out there.
Okay, great.
Anthony, I have just one question. In reading this, I was trying, are we looking for a company that would always work on it? So in other words, people in the town hall wouldn't be able to, like, add something?
Yeah.
I would, I tried to find that in here, but I couldn't really find that.
We would still maintain the content.
Okay.
So if you remember from the various people that came before the council, there was two, there was large-scale.
I remember them all.
And then there's small scale. But in either event, you're maintaining the content, the town's maintaining the content.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure that, that they make it an easy way, or these for?
And that's one of the things we talked about all along, was to make the content management as easy as possible.
So if you want to go on, even though somebody else has developed it and it's on their site, you will be able to do that?
Correct.
That's what I wasn't sure, I didn't see that in here.
Yes, 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 we'll, the content management is, on the last, second to the bottom one on that grid, content management via web browser, cellphone, app, or a tablet.
Oh, see, I thought that meant people that were.
Yeah, no, that's, that's us, my management content.
So is this, are we looking to do this in the next fiscal year?
Oh, no, as we.
Twenty-two, twenty-five. Well, because it's, it's, the RFPQ is 2223, but shouldn't it be twenty-one?
It should be twenty-two, yeah, it should be twenty-one, you're right.
Twenty-one, twenty-two?
You are correct. It's gonna happen this year.
So it's not number one, because I don't know where we are.
Yeah, me neither, me neither. I could check, we could.
Because I thought we had money and capital anyway.
You are exactly right.
Yeah, okay, so.
Yeah, we could renumber it, I'll have, shall renumber it, based on what the current RFQP numbers are.
And we're looking at something that's scalable, so we can use it for future needs, obviously, there's things.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
We're also looking also, Deputy Chief Lovelace is looking for, you know, a refresh of his pages as well, so.
What about mobile technology?
That's part of it.
Is part of it? Okay. Make sure that.
Part of the grid.
Part of the grid of things you want to be able to do, customize the view for mobile devices, yep.
Very good, we'll play Oregon Trail on it, because I'm sure MS DOS was. All right, good, I'm glad to see that's, that's moving along, thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the RFQ slash P, we'll renumber it for 2122, for website design development and hosting.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That shall pass, thank you. Okay. Section B, assessor David Ambrose regarding grand list. Mr. Ambrose, how are you, sir?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor. By all means, please.
As I had mentioned to the finance committee, and it's been obviously well-publicized, there's been a significant increase in the value of used cars today, and David is here to review the impact that that's gonna have on the grand list, to kind of give you a precursor to forewarn just forearm, because some people are gonna see some significant increase in the value of their cars, and it's just the, the way of the world today. But Dave has a complete rundown of the grand list for you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, final of council numbers? Benny? As you are aware, per your packet, the net grand list increased by forty-four, forty-two million dollars, or 3.17 percent, and that equates to 1.4 million dollars in, in revenue. The big ticket item this year is the motor vehicle grand list. The grand list for motor vehicles increased by a mind-numbing thirty-three million dollars, or 25.23 percent. It's absolutely incredible. I've never seen this in my thirty-four years in the business, it's absolutely, these are rebound numbers. And my association did a survey among all the assessors in the state, and the median increase for every town is twenty-seven percent, so we're like, right below that number, which makes you feel a little more comfortable. In your packet, I've listed several reasons, articles, why there's an increase. I came across a few more this week I want to share with you. Covid caused tens of lanes to cancel vacation plans, resulting in unprecedented demand for cars. Also for Covid, another Covid related issue, car manufacturers are finding it difficult to find microchips for their cars, due to an increased demand for personal electronics, such as cellphones and laptops. Production cannot keep up with demand. Because the number is so mind-numbing, we decided to measure three times and cut ones. We applied a lot of QC to this list. Jessica literally checked twenty-five percent of the passenger vehicles, that equates to three thousand vehicles. In every case, the number, the number matched the NADA.
Very important to know, the North Branford's not making these numbers up, it's kind of out of our control.
No, these are, these are well-applied control numbers, and they're legitimate, they are legitimate. Speaking of NADA, I just wanted to tell you a quick history of pricing for motor vehicles among assessors. When I started in 1987, the assessors committee for motor vehicles sat in a, in a room and hammered out values for each and every car for every manufacturer. You know, it's very, it's time-consuming, but the numbers were, they were, they were fair. They were below retail and slightly above market value. I think the reason is, another reason, they applied a adjustment factor to this. Then, one day, I had my theories, that the state enacted a law which mandated the office OPM to recommend a pricing guide on an annual basis, and they recommend on an annual basis the NADA. The NADA values the clean retail of a vehicle as it sits on a dealer's lot, without any blemishes and low mileage. And I tell taxpayers, when they come in, and they say, Dave, I can't get this for my vehicle, I say, because you're talking about market value, not retail value. If I sell Rose a car, and I said, Rose, the NADA values my car at five thousand dollars, you say, Dave, you're crazy, it's ripped inside, and has high mileage, and has a couple dents. I said, okay, and you offer me four thousand. And I said, well, I just had the car tuned up, so it's worth a little more than that, we set a lower price, that's, that's market value. Fortunately, the cars aren't priced that way. But fortunately, the Board of Appeals, which will meet this September for, for, for motor vehicle appeals, they can't take into consideration things that we can, high mileage, you know, the blemish, or the dents, that sort of thing. That's a little history. Next year's grand list will include several new projects. One is a million-dollar permit for a new office building at 1011 Middleton Avenue. Also, a two-story office building at 1437 Middleton, and also the new Mill Pond Gathering, as you know, is on page for completion, way before October 1st, so that'll be online next year. Depending on the completion date, the grand list may include a permit for a five thousand square foot, square foot addition at 1177 Middleton Avenue, and there's ten permits that will pool so far for new construction, for, for homes, that will pool between October 1st of 2021 and today. Hopefully, we got, we'll have a lot more filed between today and the end of the grand list season. We sent out change notices for statute for the grand list. We didn't get many calls or many inquiries, so I, I feel very, very good that we're not gonna get any appeals, you might get one, but I won't be surprised if we didn't get any. Oh, proposed bill number thirty reduces the cap for mill rates imposed on motor vehicles from forty-five to thirty mills, and reimbursement will take place between July 1st, 22, and July 1, 26. What happens, what happens after that, I have no idea. Also, our elderly homeowners are coming back in for the first time since 2019. I, I spoke to Mike and Anthony, I want to include a supplement to the bill, to the bills, explaining what's happened with the motor vehicles. I think that'd be very helpful.
I agree, I think it will, as well.
And that's all I have.
So on the, the ones that you said that will be on the grand list for October of 22, the businesses, the couple that you mentioned, how many of those apply for the tax abandonment?
None so far.
Well, they have to apply for it prior to the construction or anything.
Yeah, no, the, the statute says that if you, if you're constructing a new building, you shall be eligible.
Oh, so you don't have to apply for it?
You do have to apply for it, but we really should reach out to them, because you have, you know, you're entitled to this, it's, it's here for your benefit, you know, it's here to, for incentive to build new, new buildings here, so, it says shall, they really should be eligible, everyone should get an application and file for this.
Okay, but if.
Shall, yeah, but then, but according to, according to the ordinance, they have to, they have to start, it apply, it be approved before they break ground.
Okay, and if it's an existing building that they're doing renovations to?
If they meet the threshold of a thirty-five percent increase in the value, then they're eligible.
They're automatically eligible, they don't have to apply?
They have to apply.
Okay.
The only caveat is they have to apply before they break ground.
Does the council have the ability to waive that?
It's not in the ordinance, I'm sure, I'm sure they could if they wanted to.
Will they have the appetite to waive that?
I think we should encourage businesses, I mean, that would, I mean, if, some of them might not know about it, and, and with the change in department heads, town planners and things like that, some of them might not know about it.
I agree.
Or whatever, and so I, I, I think in order to be fair to existing businesses and any new businesses coming in.
I think maybe we should, we should have applications in the building departments, when they pull permits, they'll be educated on what.
Have that communication there.
Yeah, but if there's someone that did not, I, I think, they should just come before us and, you know.
I worked in the towns where they, they were in violation of the ordinance, they did it and filed until after they broke ground, but the powers, the executive part of the town, they did allow them to reactively, get the, get the referral.
Can I just question?
Yes.
When they come to apply, is there a packet of information that, when somebody applies for a permit to build, can you include something, a letter or a notice?
It's, it's a very detailed sheet, application sheet and instructions, very detailed.
So we can't give them a notice, instead of waiving it, just to notice that, hey, you're applying for a permit to build, you have the opportunity to sit there and?
Well, if we have, if we didn't do that, and they weren't aware of it, that's what we're talking about, is that they would have the opportunity to get it now.
Well, you were just, you were asking to waive it, I was just saying, just give them the information prior to, in the packet of information, give them something so they are aware of.
Right. And that's what Dave had talked about, is doing something with the building department, having that packet.
Yeah.
So in case they, but there could have been some people that started projects a year ago, a year and a half ago, two years ago.
Not aware.
That are now coming on board, that it's completed. And if they didn't apply for it and didn't get it, then that's where I'm saying we should give them the opportunity to come, to apply and to counsel.
The application is only a formality, so we can see if they have backed tax, see if they're eligible.
Right.
If they meet the threshold, the 35% threshold. So it's only an application. It's just going through the process.
I think, I think we should do that for mental, I think we should do it for Covid reasons too, because the town hall was shut down for a while. You know, things were, you know, things were not operating optimally for a while. So I think for...
Moving forward, it just becomes part of...
Kind of becomes part of it.
It gives us an opportunity to go forward.
It's an opportunity change.
How far do you want to go back? Do you want to go back two years?
Whoever's coming online now, that haven't been on the grand list, that are, will be coming on the grand list.
Right.
So you want to limit it to just people who are coming on now?
Well, any additions, because if they already, the ordinance is not that old, first of all. So it's not like we have to go back 10 years because we didn't have it on the list.
When the sunset date comes for the ordinance, you could add certain things to the ordinance. You could add stuff like this.
Yes.
Like that's a lot to be going back and...
So we can make a minimal...
Like for Covid, you could build a Covid reason into that.
I say go back to 2020.
Yeah, I agree with that.
For Covid purposes.
Yeah. And I mean, some of these businesses might have started in 2019 and are just finishing now because of the Covid.
Plus, if you think about people, I apologize for cutting you off. If you think about people that started businesses right before the pandemic, I mean, what a time to start a business. They probably took a hit. So, you know, if we can do this and it eases things, you know, I think we should consider that.
I mean, it's there to, it's a incentive.
Right.
It's kind of a product that we can go with everybody. That meets the requirements.
I agree. 2020 is probably the right timeframe back. Absolutely. Do we need a motion to amend the ordinance? Or would we just go about and make a motion to...
I don't know that we can amend an ordinance. Yeah.
I'm sorry?
You'd have to refer to public care.
If we wanted to amend it. We would have the right to...
I think more of administratively, without amending the ordinance, to be able to accommodate what you want to do.
I think you re-approved it last year or the year before. I know it was, it was up for another vote or to be, to be approved once again. I think fairly reasonably.
Yeah. I would entertain a motion.
To...
For the approval. How would he, how would we want to word that motion?
Well, I think...
Can I help, help with that?
Yeah, if you can get, well, first of all, when these, I don't, I'm not so sure that we have to do it exactly tonight because as these companies come on board, Dave can get a list of those that will be coming on board. And if they have not applied...
Right. Jot to them.
Yes. And then...
Start the process.
And then come back to us and let us know who they are and...
Sounds perfect.
Let's move this to unfinished business. Get that list together for us. We can have a conversation about it and move it, you know.
Yeah, just so that we...
Have a motion in the next meeting. Our goal, next two weeks, we'll come back to this and try to get it squared away.
Perfect.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Ambrose? Mr. Ambrose, anything else?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jessica, for what you did.
I guess?
Yeah.
I bet you're ready.
Okay. All right. On to item C, Town Council vote on methods to be used for the ARPA funds.
Right. So you had asked about a two-step process for, first of all, categorizing the method or use. So I have prepared a suggested motion for your review and action.
Okay, please read that off first.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that the Town Council hereby categorizes the federal allocation of $4,186,516.99 to the town of North Bramford as replacing lost public sector revenue and chooses to select option number one under the final rule for the standard allowance of $10 million to spend on government services through the period of performance.
Motion made by Counselor Zoni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zinn-Patton. Any discussion? Clerk Pollock, can we do a roll call vote on this?
Absolutely.
Mayor McMillan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zinn-Patton.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ashley.
Yes.
Counselor Dinan.
Yes.
Counselor Gold.
Yes.
Counselor Mase.
Yes.
And Counselor DeLicia.
Yes.
Thank you. That unanimously passes. Okay. Item D, discussion and action of the ARPA funds distribution internal.
Yeah. So this is just, again, a follow-up, if you're ready, to begin to identify which projects you want to maybe, you know, make, take action, make a motion to fund. One of the, obviously, biggest pieces was the analysis Anthony brought forward on the internal summary of departments, which turns out to be 234. We had talked about a placeholder of 250,000, but it was 234,096.72. You can start there and work your way down in terms of any other items. Could be the 50,000 for nonprofits that you want to do, could be the stage and/or amphitheater project, wherever you want to take it. I couldn't exactly prepare a suggested motion to capture everything. So just thought we'd start and work our way down the list.
Are we prepared to do this right now?
Well, we talked about this at Finance Committee last week and the reason, and we decided that we would put it on the agenda. First was the motion that we just made as to how we're going to use the ARPA funds. And the other thing is that there are, with the planning of the Poco Fest right now going on, it's very critical for some of these departments to know that this is what we had discussed at our workshop. And, and so we put, the things that we put on here, one was the internal summary, which is approximately the 234,000. And that is made up of the ambulance service getting approximately 126,000, the recreation programs, 32,684, the potato festival, 60,000, a little over 60,000, and the senior program, just over $15,000. That's what makes up the 234,000. So in order to do the planning and for them to move forward, especially on the Poco Fest, is to approve this because we were all in agreement at our workshop that this was one of the areas that we were...
The other thing is I'm disappointed that we didn't have the workshop tonight. So we could have discussed some of this more. I don't understand, you know, the notice said because of a lack of quorum. I don't quite understand what happened and why we didn't have a workshop.
So tonight, we're, we're only going over what we already put together in the, in the previous workshop. We felt that in the future, when we're going to our budgetary meetings, it would be more appropriate to have the workshop then to better, once we have numbers for some of the larger scale projects that we're looking towards. So we still don't have those numbers yet. So it's not necessarily appropriate to discuss something that we're not really aware of how much it's going to cost. May it be, you know, a larger scale project of a gas line or sewers or any type of certain large scale repairs. Until we have those numbers, it's, you know, kind of a moot point to discuss if that's the direction we're going to go in. We did, however, come to a consensus that we were going to spend X amount of dollars for these particular services, and we don't want to hold them up being that is time sensitive in the planning of, of these particular activities for the summertime. Case point, the Poco Fest.
Yeah, but I don't get, it's a workshop. What do you need a quorum for if it's a workshop?
Well, to make decisions in order to come out with...
But the workshop doesn't make decisions. The workshop will make recommendations to the Town Council.
Correct. But you'd want to have everyone within that, within that workshop. So we're not making decisions without having understanding of what those, what those numbers are, right? If you want to have that workshop, you want to, what we're trying to do is make it more concise, right? So we're going to do a workshop now and then do a workshop again within a month from now and we have those numbers back. Seems like a little bit of a waste of time.
I understand now. Thank you for the explanation from both you guys. And I get this. The only concern I have is that after this, this is it until we figure out how we want to spend that money. Because I don't want to fall into a routine of chipping away at the money and then finding ourselves in a spot where we don't have enough to do some of the bigger projects that we want to do.
Correct. I agree with you 100% on that.
So, so the first one was the internal departments. The other item is the amphitheater, mobile stage, whatever you want to call it. And Jesse is here from Park and Rec. That's on there because if we want to have that in place for the Poco Fest, right now, the lead time is 18 weeks. So it's something that we would have to act on now so that she could get the order placed and with hopes that we would have it in, in time for the Poco Fest.
So is that priced 200,000? That's what that is?
Yes. That, that was the price that was given in our workshop on January 25th. And Jesse is here with, to give us more specific.
But that report's not in this package, right? On the amphitheater?
I have the ambulance, the recreation, potato festival, and senior programs fund.
Right.
But I don't have the amphitheater here. That's on a different page.
That was, that was discussed at our workshop on January 25th.
All right. So you want that included. Tonight, I take it.
Right. And Jesse is here to present to us the information that she has and what she has received as far as quotes.
Yeah, the purpose of this is obviously, there's a time commitment to this.
No problem. Where's Jesse?
Right here.
Right there.
I don't know who you are.
You don't know who I am?
Thanks. Thank you, Jesse.
I've been here a lot. So I do have the quote that was provided by Winters. I'm going to butcher the name, but it is for 211,243. We can cut that back by taking off the stage extension, which is $13,000, which would put us under the 200,000 that we recommended. I can show you the quote as well as the specifications for what we're looking for. And if you have any questions on it, it has all of the dimensions and everything. I don't know.
Yes, thank you.
Jesse, what does the stage extension consist of?
It just extends the stage that we're able to add on. So your regular stage, I believe it's in there as 28 by, I can't remember the exact number, I apologize. But it would extend the stage another 10 feet or so so that you could do larger performances, get more people up on it. It's a common addition, but it is something we can add on afterwards.
Afterwards? Okay. That was my next question.
Yep.
So this stage is, what is it, like a trailer that folds open?
Correct. It's like a tractor trailer. It's very similar to the one that you see in New Haven. Bristol has one. West Hartford has one. I believe all three of those are the same manufacturer. Century makes another one, but their quote was significantly higher and didn't meet a lot of the things that we like about this one. For example, hydraulic leveling. So essentially, this stage can be broken out within 35 minutes to 45 minutes by one or two people. The other stages, you're looking at a four-hour setup time with three or four guys, which with a small public works crew, it would obviously be them setting it up. We wanted something that's convenient, storable. I already talked to Franny about it, and it would be able to be compact and stored on the Poco site. The other benefit to this is you can start generating rental revenue by loaning it to other towns. There's a whole fee structure that you can set up. Not saying you're going to make the whole 200,000 back, but you can start to generate some revenue from that and use it for Memorial Day up here, any of our events for senior activities, it can also be used for. So it's not just for Poco. It would really be a community stage. You could look at renting it to nonprofits for events in town. You have a lot of options with it.
Did you get other bids or is this just one company?
I did quote out three different companies. We are able to go off contract with this. So like a, a federal contract essentially.
Jesse, do...
I would have liked, it's too bad that we didn't get to see some of that before we vote on it. I'm not, not that I'm not, I certainly am in favor of it, but I feel like I don't have any information in front of me.
Jesse?
The other thing with this is it has a hydraulic ADA compliant left in the back. So anybody that has special needs or disabilities would be able to use this stage as well. Comes with the lighting. All, that's all included where the other one was like $100,000 more than the conversation to print out a model.
Is there any site work that needs to be done as far as leveling out the land a little bit more, increasing the electrical supply to the area if it, if it's, all has lighting and stuff like that? Or is everything there and ready to go?
Yes and no. So you could just park it, but pending on weather and surface, you don't have a, on the Poco site, you would probably want to pour a pad so that it doesn't sink into the ground and that you can get it in and out easily in case of weather. But it's not a necessity at this exact moment. According to what I spoke with Fran about, it shouldn't be an issue for electricity based on the amperage. But at some point, we would probably want to put in a designated amperage setup for that and the same thing up north. But it can, I'm not going to say it's your regular outlet, but it's a pretty basic outlet that you can use on.
Would two weeks set you back very long?
No. I honestly can't answer that question. The problem you're getting into right now with lead times, I don't know if you've ordered anything, but I just found out my windows went from 12 weeks to 28 weeks. So I'm renovating my house. But my point being, I can't guarantee that. He also said that this particular vendor, they do all around the country. Everybody has ARPA funds. Everybody's trying to get ready for concert season. So we wait two weeks and the lead time could be 20 weeks. I can't guarantee you anything. He said the lead time is 18 weeks now.
I mean, we've spoken about this before. I'm, I am in favor of something like this, but I agree with Maria. It would be very nice to see...
I'd be happy to try to get those for you.
Have something.
And maybe even get an idea from Franny what, what the approximate cost would be for the Poco field pad and if there's an electrical upgrade that needs to happen.
Yes. I mean, I'm happy to try to get that for you.
So what have we been using now?
Let's do that.
We currently rent a stage from New Haven. So we're at their mercy. They've given it to us, to my knowledge, for free. It's not a guarantee. And we haven't borrowed it for those two, the last two years at that time. So there's no guarantee that it's available when we request. Obviously, their events take first priority. So...
Jesse, would you be okay with us putting on the screen above us to suffice those that want to see it? There's wonderful technology with web design now and that we could look at it right here?
Oh, sure.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, that's, that's what my music, I was kind of watching YouTube. I didn't know the sound.
Oh, the, the $200,000.
So I won't get anybody in trouble. I'll say, Perter Parker didn't want to print out enough copies.
Yeah, I was having a little, little picture issues. I apologize.
This actually can't get killed for saying it.
Thank you.
I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench in this whole thing.
It's the tractor trailer.
Can I just, I think I know where you're going. Can I just say something? It maybe makes a difference, maybe the other.
One person at a time. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, that is $211,000. It was $150,000.
From conversations I've had with, with Jesse and some other people, it's not just about that one weekend, the Poco Festival. We want to expand the use of that, that property and start bringing the town together for concerts and plays for kids and stuff like that. So I know when you look at it and you think to yourself, well, if we're getting it for free for the Poco Festival, what do we need to buy one for? But it's, it's, I think in my mind, it's more than that. It's about expanding the use of that property and having our own facility in order to do that. So I don't know if that's where you're going.
You do know me, good Rob.
The other thing that...
I'll say what I was going to say. This money's designated for, we'll say, big things. So now when I look at it, so I'm not, I mean, I don't know where I'm at right now. This is kind of catching me off guard, to tell you the truth. But I'm saying, like, the Poco Fest didn't lose money over Covid, did it? We just didn't have it.
But that's lost of money.
We're going to fund the whole Poco Fest with this money, the whole Poco Fest. We're going to fund it with it. And don't mean to term it like this, but I look at, and we're going to buy a big toy too.
Well, you got to, we have to take out, we tend to do this in North Bramford. We give something a name and we run with that name. This isn't for the Poco Fest. This is going to be used at the Poco Fest. But as Ron has indicated, it's not for the Poco Fest. This is for the betterment of our town so that we have an area that can be utilized for other activities as well as the Poco Fest. For, for the kids, for our citizens, so that we have, we're trying, I think, of the, the vision of this board, and I know you and this board, and I know you and I have talked about this, is to have had, to start to unify North Branford and Northford with some kind of centralized environment. We're unfortunately a town that does not have a green. The closest thing to that green is what we utilize now in the Auger property, it's a Poco Fest field per se. It's the reason why we didn't put the police station there. It's the flattest piece of land, but it's also the only usable piece of land to congregate and have these type of town events.
Mr. Mayor, just another thought, too.
Yes, please.
Also use it for graduation.
Correct. We use it for graduation.
I'm sure we could find the parade, you know, there's, I think there's other, there's other things.
Do you understand where I'm coming from? Because now it's like, all of a sudden, we have this chunk of money and next, you know, we are spending a lot of money in this.
Correct.
So now it's like, oh, let's buy this toy, let's buy that toy, or a new truck, or this one. It's all gonna be 200 here, you know, and, you know, I'm just.
But ARPA funds are meant for the betterment of the town and the betterment of, the purpose of, A, revenue loss and citizens. It's perfectly good to question it. It's what your job is to do here, is to question it. I think, you know, we chose in this capacity to look towards a mobile amphitheater versus a permanent amphitheater, because obviously a permanent amphitheater would be ostensibly more.
Hey Steve, there's a bunch of videos.
We can use other places.
Like videos, that's.
It's got good music.
Are we able to get this up on, okay, there we are. Answer is that question? Now, from what I understand, there's the ability to expand this in the future and have, you know, other ends. Am I correct in saying that, extend out?
I don't.
Wings would, wings on both sides could extend out. When you get your extenders, they could go to the front and to the side. And then you see that white box behind the speaker on the left? That's the ADA hydrogram. It's a gate in theory.
This is the exact one?
This is, yeah.
Similar, but lighting package is slightly different.
Size, though, it's that small?
This is 28 feet.
It's 28 feet. It's not.
I'm just thinking about a band, I mean.
It's the one I, I have used it in West Hartford and Bristol. They're very similar. It's a standard size. You could go bigger, but then you're on three axles, which makes it harder to drive and harder to navigate. When I spoke with Franny and Ken, who are the people who would be moving it, they were in favor of the two axles versus the three axles. You get into a little bit more difficulty navigating it, harder to get it into spaces. Most bands can operate within this. I've had a nine-piece band up there.
And so the $211,000, that includes freight, correct? And what's your freight cost on this? It has to be thousands.
Do you have it? Yes.
$6,100 bucks.
Yeah.
Out of, so really, the stage and everything is like 205, and then you have the freight under 204 something.
Correct, yeah.
Size-wise, how does this compare to the one that we've utilized in the past for just, from New Haven?
I believe it's the same size.
Same size, okay.
And the extension, does that come off the front?
Yes. Yes, it does.
So on this $211,000, does this include the lighting package?
It does include the lighting package. It does not include sound, so that would still be up there.
Sounds different, sounds is.
Yep, no, it includes the lighting package.
And it's that lighting package or is it a different?
It's a five-pin DMX override, so it's not that, I don't think they produce that lighting package anymore with all 20 lights. I think that's almost a 20-year-old model. It's, if you see.
Is it this?
Yes. But they say the LEDs are, I don't know.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
So it's LED candy LEDs.
I can give you more picture. I just went to the deferred website, but City Bristol always has.
So they first the two, the two.
Get a video, get a video.
Or is it just, is it just?
It's five upstage LED lights and the candy mounted, LED LEDs.
It is the candy mounted light.
Correct, yes.
YouTube files right there.
Audio is a completely different animal, so.
Yeah, yep.
Where's the mandebad?
This video?
Minnesota.
Minnesota's.
So it's $6,800 to drive it from Minnesota to.
Deputy Mayor, I did not hear what.
Go back up to the top.
To what city you want to hear.
All the way up to the top. See where it says images and videos? Click on video.
Yeah, $6,100. So the stage extension would be nine four by eights and two four by eights.
It's like watching paint dry.
It does open faster than that usually, I'll be honest.
Warranty.
It's only two minutes.
It had a five-year warranty.
Is that, what does that include? Because obviously, there's hydraulics in this?
Yes. It's an auto hydraulic leveling system. I believe that is included in the warranty, but I can confirm.
Jesse, do you know the life cycle of it?
You can hear the pistons.
Ours is over, Bristol's was over 20 years old when we had it.
So they had one of these, but it was 20 years old. And it's still working.
They have pretty good life, great life range on them. Again, think about that, extrapolate that out, if we're able to rent it once in a blue moon. You're gonna probably end up paying for this.
Did you do any research in other towns that don't have it that you can rent it out to?
That I can rent it out? What do you mean?
Well, if you want to rent it out to Guilford, Madison, Durham.
Many of them are going to buy their own. So Branford is looking actually at the same exact model we are. I just found out that they're.
So we don't have the opportunity to sit there and rent it outside the towns because they're purchasing their own.
A lot of them are with ARPA funds. We may be able to stem, but you get contracted more by like for-profit, nonprofit. So for example, like we have the person looking to do the music festival. Instead of having them go out and buy a stage from somebody else, we could have them use our stage.
I know who that is, so.
I'm just, yeah, throwing that out there.
Ultimately, this gives opportunity for more events at the town.
I'm totally with it. I just, $200,000. As Counselor Goode said, it's a nice toy, very expensive. But as long as it does what it's.
So is that being operated with remote controls or?
Yeah, it's operated by a remote control from the back. It's fairly simple.
Yeah, okay.
Can it manually be opened? Can they actually do a manual open?
I don't know the answer to that. I've never, I've never had it not operate.
That would be like a nightmare, right?
Almost all hydraulics have an override in some capacity.
That's true. Okay. Does anyone want to see any other videos or pictures? Again, this was brought to our attention recently, and it's a matter of time. Just as Jesse said, there's a number of other municipalities that are going to be looking to purchase these. Lead times are certainly difficult. I know personally myself, we bought a new refrigerator and we were given a specified time period and it took 12 weeks to get or something crazy like that. It's just the world we live in right now.
We would have that fairly soon because 18 to 20 weeks is gonna put us right, right there.
Yes, that's why we're talking about it tonight.
Yeah, right there.
And I'm sure that this quote is only good for a certain amount of time.
Usually 30 days.
And then.
Correct.
Prices could go up after that.
That's the only company?
There's another company, but it's over almost $100,000 more with less options to purchase.
And they did, they looked at three quotes.
So Franny was rented out, I think he was adding more men to the job instead of running in.
Correct.
And the turning radius with three axes, even more delicate.
Mr. Mayor, you want a motion on all of this stuff?
I suppose we.
You want it broken down by each item or you want it totaled?
It's written there.
I think it's written as one.
Well, one is, one is, one is the internal, how did Anthony put this? Internal, the internal summary page.
Yeah, which is your $234,096.72. That's what we discussed during our last workshop.
Okay.
Fund 220 ambulance service, $125,978.28. Fund 226 recreational programs, $32,684.50.
All right, so I'll make a motion to fund 220 ambulance service, $125,978.28. Fund 226 recreation programs, $32,684.50. Fund 230 potato festivals, $60,353.49. Fund 220 senior program fund, $15,080.46 for a total of $234,96.72 to be used with the ARPA funds.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Counselor Mace, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Any discussion? Again, this does not include the mobile amphitheater as discussed. This is, Jesse was on the initial workshop for ARPA. Hearing no discussion, bring it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? This passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to purchase the Winger Amphitheater for $211,243.29. That was in the invoice? Do I have that amount right? Who has the invoice?
It's a quote.
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 Using the ARPA funds to purchase the amphitheater for the betterment of North Branford and Northford communities for public events.
Motion by Counselor Mace. I'm sorry?
I didn't hear.
Seconded by Counselor Abelson.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion?
Can you guys just clarify why this doesn't have to go out to bid?
It's off a federal contract. I mean, we can't, we can't, it'll just delay the process.
No, I understand. I just want to make sure that.
It's not required to go out to bid, correct?
And that is the extender that will put the width to 14 feet on the thing.
Right.
Just clarifying.
This doesn't, this includes the extension?
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? This passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Let's hope we use this to great use. We get it in the timeframe that you say. I think North Branford would be very excited to see what we can do with this in the future, in future events for our citizens.
Well, I thought it was a great idea when I first heard it. I think it was a great idea that Rose brought it up. You know, we got to do these fields, we got these other fields, you know, that could be utilized for concerts or whatever. So I think it'd be a good asset. And like we said, if we could rent it out, what do they usually charge to rent something like that out?
It ranges on a per hour basis, but typically about 800 plus, whatever your man hours are.
Okay.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll be using it so much that we won't be.
Yeah, well, hopefully, you're right. Hopefully we'll be using it so much, we won't be able to rent it out.
It would be really nice to bring more things into North Branford and have more things for our citizens to do in our town versus going to the outside towns to do those things. So that's our goal here.
We'd probably be better off not renting it, too, because liability.
Yeah.
If it comes back and it's broken and. Well, that's, yeah, you're right. It's probably better to stay and then we just use it. Yeah, it's always a possibility.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Before we move on, can I just, for consideration, again, the printer didn't print enough copies. We were, happened to be, the director and I were just going through the fitness room the last couple of days. It appeared to be open on a full capacity. And I'm gonna say there's a heck of a good amount of equipment that is, since it was closed for better half of nine, 10 months and a lot of rust, a lot of rust, and a lot of parts that are no longer functioning. And at one point, the council was gracious enough to give us money to replace some of the funds, funds to replace some of the equipment, and then COVID kind of hit and we asked for reallocation. We have had them serviced, they've been up to snuff, but we have difference of opinions. I think this should be removed immediately. I wouldn't spend a dollar on a membership if I'm gonna get rust every lift, weight I lift. Which is on funds right now. And we're gonna be opening, and the people that are already there in some capacity are already expressing they're.
Discomfited.
Dissatisfied with the equipment. But who would have ever known that nine, 10 months of nothing being used would cause once well-working machines to no longer operate in its capacity? So we have quotes, we just don't have the money.
And how much, and what would it be replacing?
It'd be, I can, hand these, don't mind my chicken scratch, because I just wanted notes, but the ones that are bad are ripped apart. And there's no storage here, so we can't even remove them without putting them in the backyard or front yard. But, I mean, the dumbbells, any weight you lift, your hands could cover your rust. I'm not gonna use it.
Mr. Trino, can you explain to those of us on the board here as well as those of us listening, how a membership works for this particular gym and what services are provided? So they understand what this is, who this is helping, what this is for?
There's physical fitness classes, to my understanding. There's senior activities, so they have a membership. The commission along with the council, so all active members of military service and veterans have a free membership, as well as North Branford Firemen and North Branford Police. We also don't have enough equipment, the proper equipment for what the, a couple of the municipalities have. And then the, some of the items on that, seniors can't use, they can't even, they can't get to the equipment to start the exercises. It's so antiquated that, so you could get them weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, yearly, and kids, sports can go in there if they don't use the high school. So there's a lot of demand, just the equipment is pretty embarrassing, which it wasn't. Don't think that, it's been blacked out.
I'm not sure on the machines, Steve, but on the dumbbells, can you, there must be a way to, it's just surface rust, it looks like.
Yeah, how deep, and then, once the, you clean and you try to get that off, what does it automatically start to?
No, yeah, I don't know. But I wonder if there might be a service that.
So I grew up, I actually managed a gym for three and a half years, and I think part of the reason that happened is because you weren't constantly having contact on those dumbbells. All dumbbells are rusted. But the reason a normal gym, and the reason you got it, is because nobody was using them. So the rust, rust was still happening, but with people touching it all the time, it was constantly getting worn off before it started to look like that. I think those dumbbells, I think if somebody treated those or cleaned them up and then put them back out there, I think those dumbbells would be absolutely fine.
I think you actually put oil on from your hands.
You do.
Yeah, it also helps it, yeah.
Are the machines functioning?
No.
Oh, so you have machines that are actually broken, not working?
Yeah, we, we went through the, the gamut, the, prior to the director that we, we have now, um, I'm gonna guesstimate, two directors ago, um, we had a vendor come in and, and, um, got a bill, clean bill of health, that everything was working fine in, in a matter of a week or two, which is broke.
Right.
Now, the second one, um, forgive me for pointing, the second one now has no longer functionality.
And not all of this equipment was bought new, some of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Correct.
Although, although the ones in those pictures, I believe are over thirty years old.
Yeah, they're definitely old.
Yeah, so these, this piece, these are pieces of equipment were purchased or, or were donated per se from a, a paying gym that was getting rid of them because they were no longer functional for that particular gym to maintain their, their membership. Uh, they've, they've done a great service to North Branford, that's certainly true, and you can tell that it's antiquated equipment, certainly nothing of new technology. I agree that the, the dumbbells, though they're not visually pleasing, there's probably something that can be done to get it back to being visually pleasing, however, um, they're still functional, they're dumbbells. And I also agree that, um, it's a matter of, it's not having the oils from your hands on them, so tend to, will rust because the oils dissipate and rust then becomes present. But I do think that some of these other machines here are, I mean, some of them look older than.
And it's not highlighted, trying to sell you something, it's just, they didn't look picked out in the gym.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Now, the, the high, the new, the high school, when they do the new high school, are they getting all new gym equipment there?
Depends on what the budget looks like.
Because I know that.
That's, that would be my feeling.
The, the high school has, you know, more equipment than most gyms. So I'm wondering if the high school's getting, not that I.
I think a lot of that equipment was also sourced from the same area.
Huh?
A lot of the equipment was also sourced from the same area.
Well, and the.
Many is better.
And it's, the gym is not in phase one construction.
Correct.
And it's, it's, you're, you know, you're probably at least two, two and a half years out on that.
Well, the thing is, I mean, if the fire department's using this, the police is using it, and I hear the senior citizens. I mean, we, we can't tell the senior citizens, hey, you gotta wait till you get some more oil on your hands on there to stop the dumbbells from rusting.
Yeah.
I mean.
Do you want that, or I can take those back? Again, the printer, I will say, printer did not print enough copies for all of you.
That's fine.
I mean, if we're spending money on a stage.
What type of dollar value are you?
So we're actually gonna, if, I, I could defer to the director, but the equipment that you see, we could actually reduce the size of the gym, add more physical footprints to it, so we could have more people at the same time, and there's machines that do all.
Multiple.
And reduce that in.
Correct, so your triceps and biceps, we can merge into one machine so that we have more room in the gym for other equipment, such, one of the things that we would like to add is a Stairmaster. Um, as you know, for fire, you need your CPAC, while you don't need it, but it's recommended. We don't have a Stairmaster at all for any of those things, so, um, adding pieces of equipment that makes sense for our membership.
What do you think you need to get what you need?
You're gonna ask me this. Um, so the quote, the quote that we got came in at nine thousand, or nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty to get rid of what we have and to upgrade, um.
You do have some money.
We do have some money, we have three thousand that's allocated annually in the budget to replace existing equipment, but as you know, that's about one piece of equipment.
So what'd you say, nineteen thousand, it is?
Nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty is what it is, minus the three thousand we have would be about fifteen.
And you'd be able to get all new equipment?
Not all new.
All not, all new.
Be able to get everything up, up.
Yeah, so that would be like the Stairmaster, the abductor, the tricep, bicep, all of the ten items that were listed in your photos would be replaced and upgraded.
Or replaced with what?
New.
New.
New, new, new used.
New used. Re, re.
Newer, yeah, reconditioned, we never buy brand new, these pieces of equipment are six or seven grand each usually.
So probably five or ten years old, but it'd be.
Correct, correct, so like, if, I don't have a photo of our current gym, but we just replaced about five or six years ago, all, a whole row that is a signature line that is much newer, newer to us.
And then it's serviced evenly?
Correct.
That you have it.
We have it serviced quarterly, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I would be for spell the twenty thousand dollars for the gym.
No, no Pelotons, no, this is all, this is all like, we don't have a squat rack or a Smith machine, there is no, no, and we're actually, um, I'll be honest, COVID decimated our membership, so we're rebuilding our membership and attracting new clients with the equipment we have is going to be an uphill battle. Or even attracting our existing.
Twenty thousand. Twenty thousand would be good, right? I mean, because basically, we, right now, we don't have a gym.
I, I've got stuff like that, you don't really have a gym that people want to use.
So are, are you gonna offer, like, you can't do spin classes or anything like that, can you?
No, we don't have.
No, and we would never, we would never be able to, no.
I know, I understand that, but, I mean, in today's gym.
Yes.
Those are the classes that they offer.
Yes.
Spin, yoga.
We would need a bigger building, I, I just physically don't have room for a spin. I mean, if you want me to add a studio, I got it, I can do it.
Is there a gym in that building?
There is a fitness, so we have a fitness room, and then we have a yoga room, but you have to remember, our yoga room is utilized by our seniors, by our summer camp, by our, so I can't just put a bunch of spin bikes in it and hope that, you know, chair yoga operates in accordance. No, I would love to, I mean, I, I operated a gym prior to coming here, I'm.
Yeah, but it's.
A two hundred square foot gym, I'm very familiar.
You can't do it, I don't know.
No, I mean, the best I would hope for is to purchase like, an espresso bike, like a Y, but that's not on this list, I'm not even there yet. I'm just trying to get us from rusty equipment to, you know.
A functioning gym.
A functioning gym, and I'm, I mean, I'm even proposing taking out one of our, um, ellipticals so that we have a little bit more room and.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, making people comfortable, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the twenty thousand dollars worth of new gym equipment.
New used.
New used gym.
Thank you.
Second.
Hold on, before you, you wanna do it for twenty thousand, or you wanna do it for the number that said, which was nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty?
Actually, she said.
Well, not to exceed.
She said fifteen.
But she take out the three thousand dollars, right? So.
So she's sixteen thousand.
We have three thousand in the budget currently allocated that we just got.
Hold on, guys. Mr. Trina, what's the number that you're looking for?
So nineteen, so we would need not to exceed sixteen-five.
Not to, so that's how I want it to read, I want it to read not to exceed sixteen thousand, five hundred. Do you think you're gonna have any issue, if we're gonna put it not to exceed, at sixteen thousand, five hundred, is there any, is there any wiggle room there that you're gonna need, that you, you haven't put into account, taxes?
There are no taxes.
No taxes, but.
So are the three thousand dollars, none of that has been spent yet, and you don't anticipate, you would use that three thousand that's in your current budget to put towards this cost?
Yes, but the motion should read not to exceed seventeen thousand, five hundred. Give you a thousand dollar leeway, if you don't use it, um, you can utilize it for, you know, future capital expenditures within the, uh.
I made my motion, I made it for seventeen-five.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, motion by Counselor Code, who's the second by?
Uh, give Bruce the second.
Counselor Abelson will get the second now, please make note of that. Have fun tonight with this contest. Okay, the motions are made, is there any discussion?
Just one question, um, the source, are we still talking about ARPA or is it contingency, ARPA?
ARPA.
Via ARPA ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I think, where my understanding was. That's a, a great thing to bring up in discussion, though. Um, Counselor Code, did you intend, participate with your motion that these funds be utilized by the ARPA funds?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Abelson, you also need your second? Okay, any discussion about the not to exceed seventeen thousand, five hundred of ARPA funds, the expenditure for the gymnasium, for the bedroom of the town of North Branford? Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trina.
Very much.
Yes, appreciate it.
Okay. Where are we now, we're on, uh, the designation of official town depositories.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, periodically, this, no money can be put in any bank that's not on the list blessed by the town council. So the change, this go around is we're adding Guilford Savings Bank, a new institution in town.
Mm-hmm.
We wanna put some money into their bank.
Absolutely.
And, uh, good community goodwill, so in order to do that, we need to get them on the list of official depositories, that's the only revision to this list.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zito. Uh, I will entertain a motion to allow for the Guilford Savings Bank to be added to the list of depository banks.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council designates as official town depositories the institutions listed below and authorizes the town manager and treasurer, finance director to enter into the necessary agreements with each institution, Bank of America, Bank of New York, Citizens Bank, Dine Bank, Guilford Savings Bank, HSBC, JP Morgan Chase, Key Bank, People's United Bank, Royal Bank of Canada, Capital's Markets Division, Schwab Bank, TD Bank, United Bank, Webster Bank, and Wells Fargo.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zantona. Any discussion? Seeing none, bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That passes, thank you. Okay. Moving on to gentle item seven, approval of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget cycle.
Yeah, I hope that accurately captured, um, what we were looking to do. I think, based on conversations, we break out the six big ones and do pu- police library, uh, police-fire library, um, but of course, you can change the order, and then Board of Education, Park Rec, Public Works, uh, in terms of those operational meetings for March.
So, so I see the public hearing is our first meeting in April, which is April fifth. And then we have budget deliberations on the sixth and seventh, and we generally end up just canceling those right away because it's, we don't have time to digest the budget and start asking for things, so I would like to take out at least one of those.
But I would also like to say that I'm not available on the twelfth, so I hope that we, I mean, that we, if we're gonna take one of those out, I would ask that we change the twelfth to another date.
So I would like to remove the April sixth, the, the night after the public hearing, um, from this.
Okay.
And.
Do we need a motion to, to remove the budget deliberation?
Um, well, this is just, this is just a suggested, this is just a draft.
Okay.
So when we make the motion, we can just.
Yeah, add it or don't add it, of course.
Um, and. The nineteenth is our regular, would be our regular, that's our second meeting of the month. So that's, so I think we have to have it finalized by then in order to get it for the, um, vote in May.
May.
The referendum.
Correct, the first May vote.
Just the timeframe that Lisa needs to get everything printed and, so that, that would be the final date there. Um, so Marie, do you have a?
Well, if, if during, I mean, I can do the eleventh or the thirteenth of the week, I just can't do the twelfth.
We could look towards the, the Wednesday, the thirteenth, if this suffice.
Yeah, so we can, so we'll make that Wednesday, the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Because I think.
You can't think of any other.
Police is on that Monday.
On that Monday, yeah, and so it's, um.
Permanent project.
Permanent project on Monday as well.
Yeah, so Wednesday would probably work.
Yeah, Wednesday would work.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a clarification question? So the, it'll be April fifth, public hearing, April seventh, or budget deliberations, April thirteenth, budget deliberations, if needed?
Yeah, both that.
Both are if needed.
Both if needed.
Correct.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget schedule that is in our packet by taking out Wednesday, April sixth, and changing Tuesday, April twelfth, to Wednesday, April thirteenth.
And amendments to that. Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Angeloni, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, that passes, thank you.
Okay, so the only question is on the public hearing as to where are we having it?
Yeah, we talked about doing that, so I think we wanna get a temperature, we'd like to do it here in council chambers. If it's going to be something where there's going to be a, we talked about how possibly allowing it to be on Zoom, um, talk, talk to, talk, excuse me, talk on DB, and then possibly allowing a Zoom invite as well uh, for folks that don't necessarily have to come down, uh, to chambers, or to, we've done it in the cafeteria, NBISS in the past, correct? Um, I think it's more comfortable within the chambers here to do it, if we think that that will suffice.
Hard to say.
It is hard to say.
You know, the, the, the numbers that will come out for, for a hearing, and then we're limited, this, what, sixty-five on the capacity for this room.
There's not a one in that.
Hate to have to open it and then shut it down and then move it, um.
Yeah.
Well, I believe, what is the capacity up at the Board of Ed offices, up at Stanley T. William? I wanna say I thought that was more up there, that that would probably be, I mean, if you needed a larger space to see if it's.
The middle school's not terrible, you guys.
Well, the caf, it, the cafeteria, it's so hard to hear in there, and we're so spread out, and the auditorium, we talked about the auditorium at Finance Committee also, and the problem is, for those of us sitting on stage, it's hard to hear each other on stage. People can hear you in this.
That's true.
And in the audience, when they come up, if they wanna speak or anything, we can hear them, but it's the discussion that we have that is very difficult to hear. That's been the issue in the past, there, so that, that's why it came up. The, you know, the cafeteria is, it's very large, and it's just the acoust, it's not set up for acoustics in there, and it's very hard to hear inside there, so that, that's why it was brought up.
You could use the STW gym with the fence, the shade that's in the back against the windows, I know there's been some recitals, there were minimal, you know, echoes, and there's speakers in front of them.
That's a, I mean, that's.
Another, like, it's another option. I haven't, I don't know that, I'm trying to think the space in my head where.
It's the gym.
Yeah, it's just a small gym?
Yeah, it's bigger than this.
Is it? I guess it is, yeah.
Why don't we wanna use the auditorium?
Well, we don't wanna use the auditorium because it's very difficult to talk amongst, as we're having conversation amongst ourselves, it's very difficult to hear each other.
Well, I mean, if, if whoever sets the stage up or wherever we're gonna sit properly, it might not.
We've, we've had it with mics.
Yeah, yeah.
No, amongst ourselves, even here sometimes, it's, it's, it's hard, I mean, I don't know.
Let me ask you a question, if we're up on stage and we're in the shape of a U, all right? So we have, uh, three there, three here, and three here, we'll be able to hear each other talk, and we'll be able to hear the audience, right?
We, we've tried it before.
You've tried that before, that, that situation?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've had other events, they're not just the budget thing, but we've had other things, and it, it is difficult. It can be done, but it's just a very difficult to hear each other. I mean, Anthony's been through a lot of them.
It's, it's frustrating for the council members that they can't hear each other talk. Sometimes you even hear it tonight, I mean, sometimes Marie can't hear on this side, even in this small room, sometimes the conversations are difficult to hear across the whole spectrum.
Yeah.
We tend not to talk into the microphones.
Okay, so we'll just pick a place when we post it, when we post the meetings, pick a place.
I think it's something we could discuss, um, I mean, there may be something, I, 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 my first inclination was to use the auditorium as well. Um, I have not experienced what others may have with the, or, uh, the, the very issues that we may have, uh, but my guess is we could figure out possibly a way to make that, um, not as much of a problem, although, you know.
Maybe have, have the seats down on the floor.
Correct.
Couple, couple years, we had the council members on the floor in front of the stage, thinking that would help the problem, and that, again, it's that the width, person on this end can't hear the person on that end, so we've had them on the stage, on the floor, couple different gyrations, and it doesn't seem to work well.
You would think it's an auditorium and.
Yeah.
The acoustics would be better than that.
You could drive.
Or what you could do is like, you, you mentioned, you mentioned the auditorium, you mentioned the kids and the plays all have the mics.
Yeah.
What?
They have the, the.
We have to get hearing aids and microphones.
Yeah.
We could use that new stage.
We're gonna drive it right on there. I was gonna say.
We could have it in the parking lot.
We could have it outside, you're right.
Outdoor concert, outdoor budget meeting.
We could have it outside in the parking lot with the new, uh.
It's out of the box thinking, yeah.
Right, in front of the construction.
I'm not gonna say stage the amphitheater.
Well, what drives a lot of it is, is the mill rate, the mill rate, so if, if, depending on how the mill rate shakes out, there's, there's not a lot of mill rate movement, you might get very few people coming out.
Where we go.
Well, where we had the most people when, when it was packed, was when they were pushing for the high school.
Yeah.
Last year, i- if you took out the department heads.
There's no.
And the, the, the Board of Ed members and everything, we.
There's nobody.
There, no one spoke, there was no resident that came up and spoke.
So what's, what's the driving force this year?
I don't know, we, well, we.
We haven't got that far in life yet, I mean, but you heard the news that they presented with, you know, significant growth in the grant list. That's favorable, I mean, there's some expenses going up townwide, different departments are. are experiencing fuel, oil prices, things like that. So it's too early in the process to get an overall bottom line budget, but that, that's what drives the, usually the population.
All right, well, this, why don't we have this conversation offline? We have other business to, to attend to, but we could certainly, you know, we've, well, you know the dates here now. Why don't we try to have this in place by, say, the first of March, know where we're gonna be. I think that's probably suffice to have that, when we can discuss amongst ourselves what maybe, what may offer the best acoustics, best use of time. All right, so we have a motion or on the table?
We already voted.
We did vote, of course. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, so then we're moving on. We're going on to G, financial report for month end, January third, first two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Zito.
Financial report remains unremarkable. Top line, current year collections exceeding last year ninety-three point one percent compared to ninety-one point oh last year. Overall revenue eighty-five point five percent of budget compared to eighty-three point three last year, same time. The only department that remains over expended is the technology department. Bottom line of the expenditures, fifty-six point five, significantly below last year at this point, sixty point three. As you heard, the audit tonight, I just wanna make sure that you recognize the fact that I come to give you the good news every month, but behind the scenes, there are people that are working very hard. The audit, a lot of that credit goes to Anita Mancini, our staff accountant, who worked, works with the auditors regularly and provides the information that they need. Going crazy with this Munis implementation, you know, it's easy to say we're gonna switch software. You would not believe the amount of work that's involved in switching software, especially the wholesale change of numbering configuration. She had to create new accounts for every account we have in the general ledger. Tremendous amount of work, started months ago, and it's nowhere near anywhere near ended. So just wanna make sure that, you know, he talks about Finance Department, that all, all the women over there do a great job for us, payroll, accounts payable, and Anita as the staff accountant. So I just wanna make sure they get a shout out for that. Next item is the contingency appropriation, and this was discussed at Finance also. Talks about the network firewall and the decision that, after the approach that Finance was, do we buy it outright for eighteen-three or do we do a lease purchase? And the concern at, at Finance was, well, six months down the road, if it breaks, what happens? Are you, if you're leasing it, are they covering it versus if you're buying it? And the answer is, under both scenarios, it's covered for replacement. There is, on the switches, there's switches that are being replaced. It's a lifetime warranty with HP. And on the firewall, we do pay for firewall maintenance now, and that's covered under that. One of the key things that this gets us is the cybersecurity network monitoring. And it's a hundred dollars a month. It seems like a small amount of money, but it's one of those things on the cyber insurance form that asks, are you doing this? And you'll be able to check the box now and say, we're doing this, this network monitoring. Right now, also, one of the issues that we have is the equipment is older and doesn't get us the full gig speed that we're paying for through the CEN network. This is gonna be now getting us to the full gig right to the town hall. It's a gig currently at the middle school, and it gets lost in translation from the middle school to here. So by replacing the equipment on both ends, we'll get the full gig speed to our network, so it's gonna enhance our, our network capabilities here as well. So again, the bottom line was, do we wanna pay eighteen-three and buy it outright or lease, lease purchase? It's not a lease per se, like an operating, it's a lease purchase. It's more of a funding tool, and we have the cash to, we have contingency to do it. So recommendation is to take the eighteen-three out of contingency and just buy the equipment outright and get it installed, so that will, again, will increase our network security and get us the full speed we really need to operate in today's day and age.
Yeah, my only concern when we discussed this was that if we bought it and it broke, but being that we buy it and it breaks, it's still.
It's still covered.
Covered, that makes a, you know, a big difference.
Yep. Dennis did confirm that with, with the vendor. And the other thing too, it's nice about this proposal is currently, as I mentioned, that little gap that we have, it's slowing us down. It's a different vendor. This would be one vendor, soup to nuts, they'll monitor the whole system, our data access points, the wireless network, everything at all. This one person will monitor it, so we'll have one person, one stop shopping for all our computer needs. So, yes, sir?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So according to the contingency appropriation, in account one zero one zero 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 four seven oh three seven six oh two two oh four.
Yes.
I, I was going through the, your budget, and I'm going through these line items, and I can't find two two oh four, I can't find two two oh three. Where, where are they? I have the other ones, but I don't have those here. And if you wanna see what I'm talking about.
Yeah, the, the reserve for contingency.
Yeah, but, but when I look at these other line items, I go to two two oh one, two two oh three.
Right.
Where's two two oh three and two two oh four?
Two two oh four, we're making tonight.
Oh, you're, oh, you're making a new one tonight?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't understand that. And what happened to two two oh three? I don't see that on here.
Two two oh three.
I know it's there, but it's not here in your budget.
Right, it might've got kicked up to her department and spent out of there. I could, I could double check on that.
Okay.
That's a good point.
All right, so every time you do something like that in the.
It adds another one to the box.
It adds another account. Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
In some cases, in some cases, we spend it out of contingency. In some cases, we move that contingency money to departments. Like in the case you did a salary adjustments a few meetings ago.
Yeah, that was two, two two oh three.
Right. It says various departments, eighty-eight thousand dollar number.
Yeah, it, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't have an account number.
Right, 'cause that's, that's in, some is in finance, some is in engineering, some is in tax, some is in all these departments. So it goes, it either goes from here to the various departments, or it's spent out of contingency. Depends on what the animal is.
All right, so when it goes to various departments, we don't have an account number for it?
Well, it does in that.
In, in the backup sheet, when you're making the motion, I tell you of the eighty-eight thousand, X is going here, Y is going there. So at that point, you know where it's going.
All right.
But on this summary of the contingency appropriations, it's just one number.
Okay, so the new contingency number will be two two oh four with the approval of the eighteen thousand three hundred, I take it?
Exactly.
I understand now. Thank you.
Let's just for quick, right?
Sorry?
Yeah.
Strictly new switches, firewall.
Switches and firewall.
No cable, I mean, they're not suggesting doing that or?
Negative. It is a very good, good question that Council Abelson brought up, is when we moved into here, it's all CAT five.
Okay.
And a lot of it has been replaced over the year. We did, we did run some new runs, home runs of CAT six, and CAT five is like a couple generations behind the rest of the world. So that is an issue that we're trying to address kind of as we go along, replacing with CAT six cable.
Because on internal, if you're gonna go for a gigabit speed.
You need the CAT six.
The network to your desktop.
Yeah. Right. No, you're a hundred percent right. So as, as, in fact, Kenny is working with Dennis, we did run, that whole wing has new CAT six fiber and lines in it currently. So we're, we're trying to do it, you know, responsibly budget wise, but it's, it's a lot of labor to run the new cables.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the contingency appropriation for the network fire update for eighteen thousand three hundred dollars.
I have a motion. All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Mace. Any discussion? Seeing none, bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That passes. Thank you. Okay, on to General Item Nine H, contingency appropriation.
We just did that.
I'm sorry. Aye, approval of tax refunds.
So moved. Second.
Councilor Angeloni's motion, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That also passes. Thank you. Okay, on to Gen Item Ten, citizen statements and petitions. Are there any statements at this time?
I do have some, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, please, Mr. Zito, come on up and let us know.
Sir. First one is from Mary Alyssa Giovanni. Hey, guys, thank you for the hard work. Bob Viglione is on, says hi to everyone. Mary Fitzgerald congratulated Victoria Alanza. Bob Whitworth, with website B section five oh eight compliant. That's like an ADA issue. It definitely will be. Mary Alyssa came back on. It's well worth it for Poco and other community events with the trailer, I'm assuming.
Sure.
Randall agreed. Randy Chitting said, soak the dumbbells in a fifty-fifty solution of vinegar and water overnight.
There you go.
Take the dumbbells out once they're sufficiently soaked, use a wire brush to scrub off the rust, wipe the dumbbells, dumbbells thoroughly with a clean cloth, spray a generous amount of WD forty, and set for fifteen minutes and good as new.
I think Randy just got himself a new little gig.
Yeah.
Mike, can you print that out and submit it to Parker?
That is very good. Thank you, Mike.
And Cliff Potter chimed in, senior citizens will add Ben Gay's line to help stop the rust.
Oh, great. Thank you, Cliff. Mr. Potter, thanks for everything. I appreciate all those with the, with comments. Those are all wonderful comments to hear. Okay, so we're gonna move on. Any other citizen statements, petitions, anything to that effect? Seeing none, we're moving on to our executive session, General Item Eleven. I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session. I'm sorry, in that, I believe we're gonna bring in Mr. Marino and our, and Mr. Paulus, correct? Anthony's, Anthony's.
No.
No, town manager, town attorney.
All right, town manager, town attorney.
So moved.
All right, counsel, Councilor Angeloni, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Councilor Abelson, this is the second. All right, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, we're moving into executive session. For those of us that are leaving.